Margaret, did you have a chance to look at them?
I did have a chance to look at them and I didn't see anything.
Yeah, I went through it too and I didn't see anything either, so which...
Did you hear anything from Bill?
No, he didn't have any comments on his email.
Yeah. Okay, so can we get a motion to approve these minutes?
So moved.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. We are waiting for Brooke, correct?
We are waiting for Brooke.
Okay, so while we're waiting for Brooke, let's go to the financials.
Okay.
And I had a question on the financials.
Okay.
It was health and agencies.
Yes.
Is expended higher than normal. Is there a reason we can talk about...
We've paid...
Okay.
No, there are no general assistance payments out of that.
Okay.
That would be covered under general assistance, so that is just payments to CAP and the other small agencies.
Okay, our donations.
Our donations, yeah.
Okay, good. Alright, that was good. And everything else looked pretty much in line?
Are there any tax collection issues that you're concerned about at this point?
No, actually, I was just talking to Judy. I ran a report this morning and we're over ninety-five percent collected on the first half bill. The quarterly, I didn't check the quarterly water and sewer, but they're coming in pretty well, so we're doing well.
And do we have any liens that we need to be concerned about?
No, we have our regulars.
Yeah, we should talk about it in non-public.
We should, yeah, I mean, we can go through those, but there's probably seven or eight that we have that are remaining outstanding.
Okay, alright.
A couple of big ones and a couple of small ones.
And my assumption on the income side of the thing, that revenue on the rec department is behind as we're waiting on payment for boats?
Oh, no. Well, yes, this doesn't reflect everything that she's earned because she hasn't billed July yet.
No, that's my assumption.
But she's way ahead of her normal collections.
Revenue, not...
Revenue, yes, yeah.
Alright. And public safety, we reimbursed a whole bunch of ambulances, that's calls from last year, that's why we're so high in that.
Exactly.
Okay. Margaret, have you got anything else on that?
No.
Okay, we're done with the financial update. Well, it seems we have one department head here. So Judy, would you like to... Alright, Jim, let's talk about Public Works.
Other than the project.
Oh, here's Brooke.
Project later. It's quieting down, obviously, with the lack of rain and the time of the year, mowing and trimming have slowed it down so we're able to get on to hopefully other things here starting next week, so...
Alright, good. I saw what you said here, but I would ask if we could get a more specific schedule on this.
I do have one.
Okay.
And I just did not, I don't have it formally, I actually have it right here.
Yeah, because I have townspeople asking, you know, what are we doing, when we're doing, because that's very important.
There's quite a bit. I've been over each one of our roads and I've identified areas that need, where ditches need to be reshaped and where shoulders need to be widened and water needs to be redirected. And I have noted those places and what I am planning on doing is that I believe that we can get the majority of the work done that needs to be done with our own equipment and manpower. And what I'm planning on doing is freeing up a couple of days each week with, for a truck in the backhoe to go out and perform these duties. Starting at Boulder Path, I think what I want to do is I want to do a little bit of work on Boulder Path, Cascade Ridge, and West Bridge and work my way this way.
Okay.
Well, we need to tabulate that for you so that you have a...
Right, so we can have a schedule and let people know that this is going to happen and how come they're, I don't want to get, how come they're working on here, they're not working on mine, no, your schedule for this week?
Well, basically, yeah, I want to go to the furthest point and work my way back, which is to me logical because the material that is needed is here. And it's not necessarily a, you know, we're doing the worst place first or that, we're going to get to all of it.
Yeah, okay, so if we can just have that scheduled, that would be great.
Yeah.
Alright, anything else? All the equipment is holding up?
Yes.
Well, I see them washing that new mower every day, they love that mower, don't they?
They do.
And it's working well on the package here and everything.
It is working very well.
And staffing levels are okay?
Staffing levels are perfect.
And you've got vacations coming up for people, I assume, in the summer and that's all?
Well, we're getting over with, Bill will be back from vacation next week and I've just got guys out a day here, a day there, I will be out a week next month. So we should, I think we'll even get a jump on, from where I initially planned, I think we'll get a jump on some of this ditch work, I think I can fit some in next week.
And cardboard is getting any better or not?
Yeah, it's about the same.
Yeah, alright.
Hey Jim, I came over Triple I Road last night because I hadn't been on it in a while and I wanted to see what was going on. The other end is great, I mean, they finally repaved the whole thing, it's got lines on it, you know, and then you expect the dirt road. This side is still a problem in places, but they seem to be putting in, I mean, they have equipment up there and they seem to be putting crushed stone in some of the potholes, have you seen that?
No.
Yeah.
Oh, I can take a look.
Because I was just curious as to whether that's all they were going to do, was try and fill in the potholes?
The last, I was told by the forest engineer was that was all they were going to do on this side.
Well, it does help.
Yeah, it does.
I mean, it may not last long, but, yeah.
But there's no repaving like the other end planned for this end.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Which I think we ought to maybe write a letter, Mike and I should write a letter.
There are a couple of places on there that are pretty bad.
From a public safety standpoint.
Well, I think we should come from public safety as well.
Yeah, yeah.
And talk about if we have to go respond, then you can speak in public safety.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, great. So, anything else for Jim?
No.
Alright, great, so we'll move on, take care of Brooke, then we'll do the call-in part of our show?
Yeah.
If you folks at home, if you have the number, give us a call.
Do they have me?
No, don't do that.
They don't have the number.
He's joking.
Just park and wreck.
They don't have the number. Alright, Brooke, come on down.
You want me to come over down?
No, no, whatever.
Um, okay, so we're doing well at camps, our numbers are really exploding. Right now, we have fifty-three kids at Whale's Tail, which is like a good record.
Wow, how'd you get them there? Seriously?
They were driven by a bus and our bus, so we had to, this is the second...
Robertson, yeah.
The second, no...
Oh, oh, no, shoes bus.
Yeah, the One of a Kind Resort Bus, which we usually take, and then our bus behind it, which was completely false. So we're getting to a point where, you know...
We may go on two big buses.
Oh, that's great.
So, yeah, that's, it's obviously better financially if we can keep our bus as the second one because adding a whole other bus would be...
Yeah.
But anyway, so that's really good news, we already have seventy, a hundred and seventy-one campers for this week on only Monday through Wednesday. So the numbers are going to far exceed last year's numbers, which were up from previous year's numbers, so, you know, we're just getting into a new level here.
What do you attribute that to?
Um, I just think it's a solid program that's had a longstanding tradition, but I do think that the ability to register online has helped and it's sort of pushed people to commit.
Okay.
More so than last year when we offered the week-long option that makes people kind of commit to the week. Now they're sort of, last year they saw that some people didn't get in, they were waitlisted.
Okay.
So I think the effects of that now this year make people plan a little further in advance and people were, you know, booking online and committing. Before it was really, you know, if you felt like going that day, you would just sort of drop in, so I do think that that has had an effect.
Now are we turning people away?
We are, we are, there are people that are being waitlisted, like this week and last week, there were a couple people that weren't able to get in because we have already gone past that, you know.
Right, gotcha. And are we getting, what are the repercussions of that? Is any of it dramatic?
Not at all, it's all, you know...
People are cool with what's going on?
Yeah, they see it, I mean, it's, we see it right before their eyes, you know, so it's, there's no...
And where are these people coming from?
Um, I think we have a good number regionally.
Okay, define regionally to me.
Uh, Camden, Thornton, Waterville.
Okay, so you have kids from the surrounding towns coming in and taking advantage of this?
Yeah, and then we have...
What percentage would you say that is?
Oh, gosh.
No, just ballpark, you don't have to...
Yeah.
But is it a consistent number where people in the surrounding towns know about this and this is part of their summer plan to get their kids into Waterville?
I would say thirty to forty percent.
Okay.
And then we have, you know, people that come, you know, that are here, they have a summer home here and they spend the majority of their summer here. Some families visit their grandparents for a few weeks, some people are just here for a week. There's a big group of six kids, six or seven kids from Korea that are here for three weeks that are in camps the entire time.
That's really odd, we have a Korean troop at the Boy Scout camp in Guilford. I don't know if they're related, but there's, you know, it was just something that just appeared, happened this year, I don't know, it's very interesting.
Yeah, and it's sort of an English-speaking company.
Yeah.
And this is part of their thing. We also this week have a Mandarin-speaking person, child, he's nine years old. And we just so happen to have a full Mandarin-speaking counselor to host him this year. That was kind of like a make or break thing, so that was interesting, turn of events, but things are going well and, yeah, but the counselors are working really hard.
I think the weather's helped this year.
Yeah.
I mean, the weather has been gorgeous.
Absolutely.
Are we getting people that show up at the lodge and go, "Oh, we've heard about this camp, I want to..."
Actually, I've seen more of that this year than I did last year. More people that are here on vacation that are taking advantage of the one or two days while they're here for a week.
So we can go hiking and, yeah, leave the kids at camp?
Yeah, and I think, I'm not sure, but I think maybe the mountain has sort of advertised us more on their pages this year. I do think that, I would attribute that to their advertising, sort of on their pages and pushing the camps, I mean, you know, they, a couple of them have kids in our camps, so.
Yeah.
At the mountains, so it's sort of a personal thing.
Good.
Yeah, so camps are good, we have, our evening programs are picking up the last two weeks, I would say. Our ice cream social is becoming busier, we're doing it outside now, I don't know if I've mentioned that to you before.
I've been there, it's great.
Yeah, you did. We had four facility rental fires in July, we had twelve facility rentals, including field rentals, in August.
Define the field rental for me. Is it a camp or is it a...
Nope, eight of them are Bates College soccer practices.
Okay. And what do we get for something like that?
Um, well, the guy, let's see, what is it, seventy-five dollars for a two-hour rental.
Okay.
Which if we had the other fields, we could, you know, I think it's a reason that to really try to push that.
And people would come if we have the other fields.
And people, more people would come, I think, if we had the fields.
And this person, in particular, is a native, is a property owner, so we gave him the native rate.
Is it midweek?
It is. I think maybe one part of it is on a Saturday morning, but, yeah, most of it is a midweek, which is nice.
Yeah, that's really...
And the rest are beach?
Yeah, all fires.
Yeah.
I've seen, incidentally, I've seen the stanchions out there, they seem very intrusive to me.
Okay, good.
And at the, the night that I saw them, there were people enjoying the bonfire on one side, people playing in the lake on the other, and there didn't seem to be any issues.
So you haven't gotten any negative feedback from that, right?
No, no, I think it seems working, I'm glad that we did that, I think it makes it clear, more clear to both parties, you know, right? Okay, we can still be here and you can still be here.
And you haven't gotten any feedback either from the conference center or anything?
Nothing.
Good, nice.
All, all's good.
Great.
Um, let's see, we have a couple of interesting programs coming up. We have the Timber Drums Ensemble coming to our camps to do workshops with these big drums, timber drums, yeah, we're going to do some cool African drumming.
Oh, can't wait, when is that?
That is not, that's Tuesday at one, one and two. We also, Archie come...
I'll be gone.
We can shut the office down.
No, 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 I'll be gone, I'm going to miss it.
And we've had Curious, we've had some story times at the Curious George, they have their artist residence there now, so they've been doing some neat stuff with them.
Oh, I had a comment from someone on the Curious George thing, that they went for booktime with Rocket, story time with Rocket, and they said, "Oh, we'll go get Rocket if you want," but the dog wasn't there.
Oh.
You know, there have been a couple of things where people have gotten, gone to programming and it was, you know, really, it hadn't been organized.
Oh, really? Yeah. I just, I had actually been able to catch up with them until last week, I met with one of the boardmen members, Lynn Landa, and also spoke with Katie, their program director this year. And we're trying to coordinate some, uh, times that the camps can work with them, and that story time was sort of the first step in that direction, but, yeah, I think that they just don't have that many people, I mean, they just have the two working out, but...
Or one and a half.
One and a half.
Right, because she's only twenty hours, yeah, but she, anyway, we've got a list of programs she can do, so we're going to try to work with her with the camps. We do feel a lot of the feedback though because we're right next door and people sort of see us as a safe entity, so it is helpful for us to be on the same page and know about those programming issues. Uh, let's see, we have, also, we're doing an adaptive rock climbing session with New England Disabled Sports in August, where we're going to advertise it for adaptive athletes to come climb on our climbing wall, and they're going to come facilitate that. And that's about it. I sort of did a quick run-by of our cash, our boat cash users, and we seem to be, we are ten dollars lower in May. We're significantly lower in June in cash this year, and then we're right on track in July, so I'm not sure, we attribute that to...
So this revenue number, Mike asked, this revenue number does not include any of the boat amounts?
Are you sure?
Well, no, I'm asking. It includes, it doesn't include any July boat?
Judy's making a nod, what is it, Judy?
What's the number, really quick, do you have it, is it twelve? I don't have the detail going here.
Uh, oh, yes, I do have the detail, hold on.
It should, it should be twelve or thirteen, and that would be correct, which would be in line, which would be in line with last year.
Yeah, twelve eight forty-four.
And last year was around the same at this time.
Right.
I think we're making up for, making up for the number in Freedom Pass, but June, we were down...
So your sales mix has changed?
Yes.
Okay.
My question is, the twelve eight forty-four doesn't include your Freedom Pass for July?
Oh, no.
No, that's the...
That was what he asked, yeah.
We just barely got the June, so...
Right, right, yes, right.
Okay.
Okay.
That would be trouble.
Yeah, that would be trouble.
Alright, well, any other things on direct rec operations?
No.
Alright, so let's...
One more thing, sorry, I just want to let you know that I am meeting with the new principal, Gail, on August eighth.
Okay.
And I am also, a separate meeting, I have a meeting with her.
Okay.
Okay, then I'm going to make a suggestion, then going to the recreation, the building use agreement.
Yes.
I haven't seen anything with your comments on it, I know the version that Maeve has sent to us was one of the original versions and it...
The original, the, I'm sorry, the copy that is in your packet right now incorporates all of her...
Yes, I went to the school board meeting.
She went to the school board meeting.
And I went down the line with my comment, Mark Allen was there, and they agreed to, I read one of the comments, she put it into that version that you have right now.
Okay, with it now.
I okayed it, and, yeah, that's the signing copy, that is all good.
Okay, do we want to do this as a point of etiquette? Do we want to hold off on signing this until after the new principal has been able to sit with you and read this?
Well, she was there.
Oh, she was there?
She was at the school board meeting.
Okay, cool, so she's at, no, she's at...
She doesn't know any of it practically, but...
But she's had a chance to be included in the process?
Yes.
Great. Alright, so if you're okay with it, I, if you're okay, then we'll take care, we'll sign it.
Great, that's nice to have, yeah, I guess.
And we'll come looking for you if...
Right, I know, now it's on me.
Make sure you enclose a picture of her license on the last page, so we have that. But great, thank you for your work on that.
Oh, absolutely.
Alright, is there anything else?
Nope.
Ugata Regatas coming up?
Yes.
Are we going to push that?
We are, we're going to push that bigger than last year, it's going to be a free, it's going to be free this year, and there's going to be a boat building workshop on the beach, an I-30 leading up to it, because lots, big problem is people don't think about this until the day of. So we're going to have the boat building workshop and the materials there, I think we can work with Jim and maybe find some cardboard.
I don't think we have any.
I don't think we have any.
It's all been broken up.
Right.
Um, and then we'll just offer the races for two dollars a piece, just to get people doing it. And then we're also going to be involved with the Bruce, the Moose Festival. We're going to have our staff help out with the carts of crafts and the bouncy house and all that stuff.
When is it?
The sixth, August sixth.
Oh, shucks, I'll be...
Alright, so...
Don't they have to come in and get approval for the bouncy house and more?
Uh, it's a permit with Chris.
Estate.
And estate.
They have it approved already, so...
Okay.
Cardboard.
Alright, so, Brooke, are we also, also with you?
Unless you have any questions for me?
I don't, you, Margaret?
I'm good.
No, well, I think, I was, toppings look fine, I think you've gone to a bigger sized container, but...
Yeah, I would love to hear your specific feedback on that, like the bigger, the bigger container?
No, because I just want to eat a small amount, if you gave me a smaller thing, I'd be happy, if you give me a bigger thing, I'll put more crap in it.
I know, and that's kind of why we did that, so kids could put more stuff in. We're trying to kind of go a little healthier too, like offer some nuts and fruit option now.
Low-calgummy worms.
Yeah, exactly. Only ninety-two percent sugar.
So when the evening is over, what's left? Probably the nuts in the food.
Yeah.
I don't know that, to be quite honest, I don't know what's in the dishes, but there were some requests for some healthier options, you know, the coconut, the toasted coconut plates.
Oh, yeah, that's...
That's a given.
That is good.
Oh, it's wonderful, but I think you're operating on a curve here that's, you know...
When I take my kids there, the whole thing is, they don't even eat it, that's the problem, because it's like so candy, so, anyway.
Great, alright, thanks. Archie, do you want any, anything else?
No.
So can we call... Let's call, let's call to Joe.
Do we do public safety?
Well, I'd like Dave, because he's going to be the acting manager, I'd like him to hear this conversation, do you have time? And then we can do public safety, only because Joe's going to have a meeting.
Of course, Chris.
On vacation?
On vacation.
So you and Chris are on vacation the same time?
Uh, for three days, he comes back during the week. We're fine, Dave.
Yeah, it seems like great pictures on Facebook.
Hey, Joe, Mark, I'm going to put you on speaker.
Great trip.
Okay? You there? You there?
Yes.
Hey, Joe.
Hi, how's everybody doing?
Well, we're here.
When we're done with you, we'll know a lot better.
Okay, hold on one moment, I'm just going to close my door. I want to put it on speakerphone here as well. Okay, so Mark, I don't know where you're at in the meeting or what's been covered or not.
We are, we're just starting the discussion on the project.
Okay.
We, I've handed out a packet with Wes's email and letter.
Okay.
As well as, you know, his changes on the bid schedule, the revised bid schedule.
Right.
And then the last page of their packet includes a, the budget review sheet that we talked about with the current budget and the changes that we're recommending.
Right, okay, good. Okay, so I guess I would speak to first ICC's letter. We, when we met with them on Monday to review the project plan set and go through page by page and ask them for their suggestions on what, you know, what they saw as opportunities to reduce costs. The culmination of that really is documented in his letter.
Alright.
And I've had conversations with our self-conciliate engineering firms and our structural group for all changes that would affect, you know, anything related to those designs. The bottom line is, we're still, what we're still able to achieve with the Reduce Scope project is to build the clear well tank, the pump building, chemical feed building farther from the river, connect well four, and get that pumping into the system under the Reduce Scope project. What that leaves the town to do at some future date, whether it's a year, or five, or ten, or fifteen years down the road, is to be able to tie the other two wells, well two and well three, into this building, the new building, and centralize everything so that in the future, all electrical, chemical feed, flow monitoring, everything's coming out of this one location.
Okay.
But it preserves the intent of the project and does not compromise the operations of getting well four connected and into the system.
Okay, now, you said that we're not going to be able to connect these wells at this time.
Right.
What, in a round figure, how much is it going to be to connect these wells at a later date?
Um, well, if we took a look at the original bid, Mike, I don't happen to have...
Ballpark.
Our estimate was somewhere around a quarter of a million, right?
We're paring out, uh, in round numbers, he's paring out about two-hundred thousand dollars from this scope.
And then the add alternates were another quarter million, so it's about another, I'd say...
About another six-hundred thousand.
Six-hundred thousand.
Is that right, Mark, from your...
Well, no, about, about five-hundred, about five-hundred.
Okay.
Alright, so we delete, well, by deleting well one work and the recreation trail, what was the well one work?
Uh, that was around twenty-two or twenty-five thousand dollars.
And what did that accomplish in well number one?
Uh, that's just replacing some worn-out equipment, putting in some new pipe.
Okay, so, is that something we're going to have to look at in the next couple of years?
I think, I think that if, yes, Mike, the short answer, if that's all that the town wanted to do, say, in the next five or ten years, if there was no motivation to hook up well three to the new building in the next five or ten years, then yes, I think that would be a piece of work that the town would want to get done.
Alright, now is that a piece of work that could stand alone and be added back into this project? Because it seems to me that's a maintenance issue, that's not a luxury issue that we're going to have to deal with at some point.
That's right, and what we could do is put it into the town meeting, because we'll have ICC. Joe, would we be able to raise the money at town meeting and if it was approved, go back to Wes with a change order to do that in March?
Absolutely.
Or April?
Yeah, and if he's still under contract, which he would be through the end of March.
Yeah.
There's an opportunity to do that by change order, yes.
Okay, so that's one thing we should be looking at.
Yeah.
Now, before we get further down into this paragraph, are there any other items that you can think of that we have deleted to make our number here that are maintenance items that we shouldn't, you know, be, what's it, pound short and penny foolish or penny wise?
Penny wise and pound foolish.
That, you know, that we're missing the opportunity, if we have to go in there a year from now, it's going to be fifty, where if we do it now, it's twenty.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question, and I think, I think one of the things that, you know, we're paring out, it's a big-ticket item, is the generator. We talked about that, I think, last week, that the valley doesn't typically lose power for extended periods of time unless it's a very, very extreme storm. The, you know, that's one item that potentially could be added back in, but everything else that we've done, especially he's reconfigured, for example, the stairwell to eliminate the landing. He's made the stairs a little bit steeper, which is okay, it's not a public building, like your town hall.
But is it going to put our workers and people in there in jeopardy?
No.
Excuse me?
Is it going to put anybody who's working for us in jeopardy, is this going to...
No, it's still, it's fine for the, for the level of service of the building.
Okay.
It's not a ladder, you know, it's still a stairwell, it's just a little bit, a little bit...
Well, Joe, we, we also, we also have had him put in, like in all of the concrete work, he's going, even at the million eighty-nine thousand, he is going to put in all of the conduit so that...
And the pad for a generator, so we can...
And so everything is ready for us to connect well two and well three, so we won't have to go back and modify the building.
Right, no, he's...
Right, right, so, so I guess the short answer is, Mike, there's virtually everything that was put on the table are things that could be added later simply...
Right, I just want to make sure we're not precluding adding something at the best cost.
That's right.
We're not, you know, cutting off the nose despite the base, so to speak. Simplifying some of the systems, eliminating some things now that would be deferred, if, if well three was connected later, you know, that would, that would happen. Mark mentioned, you know, you'd have to do some electrical work inside the building, but all the conduits would be there.
Alright, I'm just looking for Bill's note here, so just give me a second here. Bill sent in some comments.
Yep, I have it right here, Mike, right here. Here it is. With, at the last meeting, we talked about starting some of the work on hooking up the new well, even if we did not get the extension for time. If we can do that without jeopardizing our chances for an extension, I think we should plan on completing as much work as possible before the September thirty deadline. And we did talk to Wes about that, not, not in that much detail, but we did tell him that time was of the essence.
Right.
He was willing to work paperwork with Joe prior to getting the contract signed.
Okay.
I did call him this morning to, after he sent the letter, to, you know, thank him for making the effort to do this and told him that we'd have this meeting this afternoon, but, you know, reconfirm with him that because the budget is so tight that anything that's being taken out here or, you know, unforeseen, we can't have, you know, significant change orders or changes in the scope from this point forward. Also reiterated, Mark, that as soon as he had any indication from us, whether an email from me or you, Mark, based on this meeting this afternoon... whether an email from me or you, Mark, uh, based on this meeting this afternoon, that, you know, the project would move forward contingent upon USDA authorization, he would start the submittal process. He would call his suppliers tomorrow and start sending the papers, the middles over, which is really where there's a lag.
No, no, I, I, we've got that.
The middles over here, so we can see that the materials...
So are we being held up in Vermont?
Yes, or National, actually in Washington.
The materials get ordered. So we'll start that paperwork process right away.
Okay, let's, let's just keep on going through this list, so I, I wanna be sure we're... It says the building will be raised two feet and mounting of soils will be covered in grade. Why wasn't that in the original plan?
Uh, we set the, the fill elevation on that building, Mike, to be, um, a foot above the 500-year storm level, but we didn't see putting it any higher, only because the, we thought there'd be added costs for, uh, you know, for backfill and, and grading, and his proposal is, bring it up two feet and then use, sort through the material that's excavated, pull out the large rock, and then just use that material for the fill.
For your fill, okay.
So he doesn't have to bring in any...
Gotcha, gotcha, so he doesn't have to bring any fill. Uh, the underdrain will be deleted and a 500-gallon concrete pan- tank will tank some... Tank with simplex pump will replace the E1 station.
Right.
All right.
So we had, um, put in the design an E1 pump system similar to what it was designed for the low-pressure sewer throughout that, uh, that end of town. And that comes with its own, um, fiberglass wet well structure, ABS wet well structure. Uh, it's the cost, he found a cost savings in just putting in a precast tank, a 500-gallon precast tank, and a simplex pump, which is, it's a basically 120-volt pump, which is what the E1 is as well.
Now...
So he found a cost savings to do it piecemeal rather than order it as a package.
Cool, now, okay, so what is this gonna be pumping out? Is this...
Water.
Water that would come in there?
Yes.
Right.
So we've got a 500-gallon, uh, kind of reserve before we stood...
Treatment, treatment tank, yes. Right now, it'll only have well four water in it. Eventually, we want it to have all three.
All right.
There's a, um, there's a stump pump in the basement, and ultimately, again, getting, thinking, Mike, of a longer question earlier about not eliminating things that we regret later. Um, having that tank and pump in there also accommodates future chemical analyzers, which we had in the design, which in our review on Monday, agreed we could pull out. Uh, the town already does some manual testing.
Okay.
Which is, is meets permit requirements. Uh, the, the continuous analyzers always have a continuous discharge as well, and that can't go to the ground, that's gotta go to a sewer. So by putting this tank and pump in now, anything that's done or added in the future to get to the complete project is accommodated.
Okay, good. Uh, one hatch with curb will be installed, and the vents will be reduced to four-inch PVC.
Right. We had two hatches in on the Clearwell tank in opposite sides of a center partition wall. And from review and discussions Monday, and talking to our structural engineers, um, we can, we can go with one hatch that's centered on the tank.
Okay.
Um, and then the vent pipes, the eight-inch vent pipes, there's a, there's a pretty good reduction in pipe material cost for him to go from eight-inch to four-inch. Uh, we have two vents in there, which we'll keep, uh, we can reduce the size of them, but, uh, it's just essential to allow atmospheric pressure to escape the tank when it's filling.
Okay, so this is just a, uh, like in your septic tank, it's the, the...
Yeah.
The tube that comes off.
Very similar, Mike, yes.
Yep, and the Sitka 62, which is better than the Sitka 61 coating, I'm sure. Concrete sealer and tank joint memory, this stuff will be deleted. What does that stuff do?
That's the, we had called for our structural engineers to call for coating on the inside of the, the tank, the Clearwell tank, but in discussing the timing of the project and getting the concrete done and cured and being able to put this material on and use it, uh, there's a time crunch based on our schedule to get this done. And we, we confirmed with Mark and Jim that the diving that was done recently in the tanks up on the hill are not coated inside either, so we, we're not violating any water quality rules. Our structural engineers added it as a, um, you know, concrete preservation measure, but, Mark, I, what, what's the age of the tank? The oldest tank up on the hill is 1970s vintage?
Yes.
Or 1980 maybe?
Yes, and there's no deterioration.
Yeah, the diving was done this year, and the concrete's still up well. So I talked to the structural engineers, and they're okay with eliminating that coating.
Good. Okay, we talked about the stairs. What about the building roof pitch? Why, what, what does that accomplish and what does that change? Does that create any potential for hazard if there's more snow than we're expecting?
Uh, no, the, the, it's a good question. The, the snow load design will be the same. So it, I think the code in that area is a five or six-foot snow load, that's in the structural notes. Uh, what it accomplishes for him is the way the, the 12-12 pitch framing for that size, the dimensions of the building, required a rafter system, so it's more manual construction. He goes to A-12, he can order trusses, which just get delivered and erected the same day. Uh, so it's a time savings and a bit of a cost savings for him, because there's less sheeting material that, that flywood and fewer shingles on, on the A-12, so...
Okay. Uh, the PVC, next one, PVC pipes and all that, that, like, as long as it's gonna work?
Yeah, yeah, those are all, those are just choices that, um, you know, he's talking about embedded sleeves for the concrete pores, which would be easier, simpler, and expedite concrete pores.
Okay.
Yeah, air release valve's still in place, uh, chemical feed system. We talked about, uh, simplifying the, the pump and rearranging the pump room a little bit, which makes it concrete work and, and his...
Yeah.
Uh, minimizes or reduces some of the piping he has to do, just condenses or...
And we...
Simplifies that, so again, there's some cost savings there.
And from an operational standpoint, all of these changes that we're talking about, Robbie Burhoe, the water operator, was at the meeting, and it doesn't affect his day-to-day...
Okay.
Testing or anything like that.
But we're not, the concern I have with this and the next paragraph, the analyzers, tank proximity switches, flow switches, will be deleted, scat, spare, spare parts will be deleted. I don't think that's something we should delete. You know, we might need spare parts.
Well, the spare parts for those things.
Okay, but, but the question that I have with this is, it will work, but is it our best use? Are we building something that was state-of-the-art for 2009 as opposed to something that's gonna be state-of-the-art for 2019?
Yeah, no, I, we're not, the changes that he's suggesting here aren't compromising that.
Okay.
Your electrical and control systems are still, still good.
Yeah, I just don't wanna have us build something, it's kinda like when you go, the old days, you'd buy, you'd have, go to the store and they'd build you a PC, and by the time you plugged it in, it was out of date. And I just, I just wanna make sure we're not going in here with cost-cutting that's gonna put us out of date, where we should be thinking...
No, a lot of the cost-cutting is because we are not connecting...
No, I, I, I've got all that, but I just, since this, in here, I...
Yeah.
I don't, I, I wanna make sure that if, if we have an issue with this...
Yeah.
Uh, two years down the road where the system is not working properly, and we go back to Joe or ICC and go, hey, this isn't working properly. Say, well, you guys said to do this instead of that. And I think we owe it to our taxpayers to just go through that. Because it's, this is a topic, I don't know what 90% of the things I've just been discussing are.
Yeah, no, I understood, Mike, and that's, that's, I mean, we, you know, I've reviewed this with our subconsultant engineers, our structural engineers, and we're not, we're not compromising the, the function of it, but we are, you know, trying to find ways to, um, you know, save some money by reducing the amount of materials, uh, the time in construction. Uh, we are changing some of the materials, but not compromising their function, so...
Okay. All right, Margaret, any questions?
No.
All right. Uh, so with these changes, I did have one question on the, the front page with the grant budget and everything.
Yes.
We come down engineering, where it comes down here, resident project engineering comes from 42,720 to 15,000.
Yes.
Then I can see construction is 78,775 to 892,843.
Right.
Why?
Well, because, well, we, we could leave 65,000 of that in contingency.
Okay.
Um, but we, we would be, what I'm saying is, we're using all of the budgeted contingency for construction.
Okay, so...
So I moved that up.
So what you do is, if I took the 78,765, and the 65,000, and the 25,000 difference here, that gives me the 892?
Yes.
Okay, just want to...
And, and, um, the three numbers at the top, the administration and all that. Yes, those numbers all combine into the 892.
So what you've done is you've just moved dollars around to keep the budget...
That's right, the total, because we only have the 944. Yeah, we just don't have the, I mean, we can't change the 944. That is the grant amount that we have left.
All right, okay, so we've got this a million eighty-nine, eight-eighty is our bid. We have 892, 843.
That's right.
And so we need 197,036.
Correct.
And you're telling me we have 197 in an account that has $230,000?
That's correct.
Okay, so if we take that...
Well, Margaret wasn't here, I don't know that you were here when we discussed that, that this is money for water and sewer projects going back to 2003. So between 2003 and 2008, we did a lot of work up at the North End. We did, you know, several extension projects.
Right.
The leftover money from that has been sitting in our capital projects account, which we've used just for the water and sewer...
Right.
Projects.
Right.
And this has nothing to do with fund balance?
And it has nothing to do with fund balance, that's totally separate. I've talked to the auditor multiple times. Um, so we have this 230,000 from those projects. And we're saying, use that towards this project, get us to the million eighty-nine. We still have the 37, uh, or 30, I'm sorry, $33,000 left in the capital account that will become the contingency for this work.
But if the USDA sees that the project cannot be done for the amount that is left, they are okay with us supplementing with our own money?
Joe and I have, have initially contacted them about it and told them that we will expend the grant, we want to expend all of the 900...
Right.
And 44,000 first, and then we will supplement to get the project finished...
Right.
With our money.
Right.
We've already expended our loan and the town share...
Right.
Right.
Towards the project, so...
And they're okay with that?
Well, they're, they're reviewing it, but just like the extension, we haven't gotten the final word back, right, Joe?
They're, they're okay with the approach of town money, grant money.
Right.
The one thing we're trying to get them to agree to, Margaret, is to spend the grant money first.
They, they initially came back to us and said, fine, spend the 197 first, and then we'll let you dip into the 944. But because of the timing issue and the fact that we've already spent our loan and...
Right.
Town portion, we're trying to get them to reverse that. Be- because it will be easier for us to spend the 944 prior to the end of March, so we get the grant...
But we cannot make an award on this until we hear about the extension.
Well, what I, what I would ask you to do is, if you're okay with this approach, we won't make a final vote on the, on the project, or the awarding of the contract, until we find out about the extension. But if, if you're okay with the approach, let's have Joe talk to Wes...
Talk to Wes, order the, get the stuff rolling.
That's right. So, so I guess we would be telling Wes it is the town's intention to move forward with his million eighty-nine thousand dollar bid...
Yeah.
As long as we get the time extension.
I can live with that.
And then we can start the paperwork. Is that right, Joe?
Yeah.
Because that's gonna...
I did get a call from Eric Law, uh, at about 2:30 this afternoon. Um, they have not gotten a definitive answer from Washington, but Vermont and New Hampshire often are pressing for a decision. Uh, what, you know, what Eric is saying in the next day or two, um...
Oh, we, yeah, we heard that before.
The project has full support of Vermont and New Hampshire to the extent that if Washington were to come back with a, a negative response, then Vermont and New Hampshire would be motivated to work with the town to, um, move the project forward, and, and if the September 30th deadline comes and the allocated grant funds disappear, USDA Vermont and New Hampshire would, um, look to supplement those grant funds with grant funds from their new allocation at their new fiscal year October 1.
Okay. All right, so I think this is fair, that if we can get, as soon as we get words, we tell, we tell Wes, go ahead, we're waiting for word. Does, does that work with you, Margaret, for you, Margaret?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Okay, and then all...
I don't know whether it'll work for him, though.
Uh, he said it would.
Well, right, Joe...
The paperwork part of it is something that takes about two to three weeks to, to process, so he can start that process with his, his suppliers, we can start reviewing it, and, and that's not costing anybody construction time, because he can't order materials until they're approved.
Yeah.
So it's not really a loss to him.
So he's got two or three weeks where he can work on the paperwork to order the materials.
Right.
And once again, we're hoping that we're gonna know by that time whether we have the extension.
Put us right, if, we will know if we don't, and we will know if Vermont and the RDA, the people in Vermont and...
And New Hampshire.
Hampshire will figure a way for us to pay with what we can get.
Yeah, that's the indication I got from Eric of, uh, Mike, is that, that they're, they're willing, Vermont and New Hampshire's willing to wait until about August 15th, and if they don't have word, they're gonna, they're just gonna do it.
Okay, great, well, let's, let's...
They'll let you spend whatever grant money you can spend to the 30th, that's already been allocated.
Gotcha.
And they'll find a way to reallocate new grant money to the project to the extent that...
Okay.
You know, to the amount that was already authorized, so...
What is, what is...
They're finding a way to do it, they're just hoping that Washington can respond.
What is AOC's office doing for us at this point?
They are just waiting for my call for her to get involved, for her to call USDA. I mean, I, I can call them today, and I'm sure she will start doing inquiries.
I, I would start this, because that might push, because we're through the hurdle of New Hampshire and Vermont. We, the hurdle is in Washington.
That's right, and I, I think...
Let's get, let's get our representatives.
Yeah, and I, I think I could tell the office, Joe, that, you know, we're getting very good support from Vermont and New Hampshire. The hang-up is in Washington, and we just need to...
Right.
You know, we just need to move the Washington people off the dime.
Yeah, yeah.
Great.
Okay, I'll, I'll make that call.
All right.
Okay, great.
So do we, I can make that motion?
Let's, let's just, you've given us a sense of the board, so I don't want any motions yet.
Okay, great. Any motion I don't have to make, I'm privileged not to make.
Is that, is that good, Joe? You'll talk to Wes and tell him it's good?
Yeah, this is what I know that we had, is that the, the approach that's been reviewed in the letter and the numbers look...
He can watch it.
Favorable, the, the department can't award until we, um, you know, get clearance from USDA.
Yep.
But that all indications are the project is going forward, and we'd like him to start the, the paperwork process.
Excellent.
It doesn't cost him anything, so even if it takes a week or two, it's just, we're not losing a week or two once we get him a notice of award.
Right, okay.
Joe, and if he has any misapprehension, he can always watch us on, on the website and watch what was actually discussed.
On the town website, so...
Right, right.
Okay.
Great, are we through with Joe?
Good, thank you, thank you very much, Joe.
Good, thanks, everybody.
Have a nice afternoon.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Yeah, take care.
All right, now that Joe's gone, let me just bring up one other thing here.
Yeah.
So if we spend 197 out of this 230 we've got, how do we, how, we'll probably need to start replenishing that account?
No, that, that money is from previous projects that we saved.
I understand, but we're gonna be out of money, we're gonna have 30,000 to look at future projects, so...
Oh, yeah, yeah, we would need to appropriate money to put back into that account.
Again, what that was is, it was for specific water and sewer capital projects.
That's correct.
And so that money that was there, it, it just was not spent.
That's correct, it was savings.
And we were carrying it over year to year.
That's right.
If we ever had another major project...
Correct.
We would probably go to town meeting and say, we got this major project.
Yes, unless we could do something for 30 or 35,000, then you could use it, but...
But this is, this is not an account that we're, like, with the hockey arena, we're putting in 25,000 a year or anything like that.
No, this, no, this was savings for specific...
The question is, do we need to start putting 25,000 in the year to year?
Well, and that, that may, well, we have the repair account, we, we have the repair account.
Right, but we're not, but we won't have a cushion...
But not a capital project, that's right.
But we won't have a cushion anymore.
Because that, what, what that does...
Yeah.
Is it, because with this project, you still don't have wells two and three tied in.
Right, no, no, I, I, I'm, I'm looking at that down the road, yes.
And what that does is that keeps us on track...
And what that does is that keeps us on track for, for doing that.
Exactly, like the twenty-five thousand we need to
Exactly.
rehab, all right, cool.
So, um, one other thing from a timing standpoint, if you, if you get the approval, the time extension while I'm gone, I would say have a special meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, because Dave can sign all of the paperwork. Um, so have it right away and
Yeah.
and get an official vote, and then that way we can award the contract and start all the paperwork.
Okay.
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 Yep. Cool, all right, so that's another one, put in the, safe for now. Let's talk about public safety for a few minutes, Dave.
Sure.
What's going on?
Um, it's been, uh, seasonally late. Uh, we've been getting beat up with rescues the last few weeks, we've done about six.
In town or out of town?
Um, uh, mostly all in town. There have been two that were, um, on Whiteface, uh, in Water Bell technically, but on, not on our, on the catch basin. So that's Sandwich and Tamworth, and all those guys responded over on that side.
Yeah.
Um, uh, uh, nothing, nothing too serious, but some very time-consuming, along with, uh, some technical carryouts.
Do you have one on Tri-Corridor?
We did.
Yeah, that was, that was the longest one.
Yeah.
Yep.
And there was something this morning? I went by with-
You and Ian.
There was a, um, yesterday morning?
No, this morning, actually.
You guys were driving around in the ladder truck today?
Yesterday, uh, yeah, uh, we took it out, we exercised the, been exercising the ladder truck, uh,
That's what I thought, it didn't make any sense for it to go out by itself.
Grease, no, no, it, it's, uh, it was running a little slow, so we greased all the grease fittings and the rails and the flies, so. Uh.
And everything else is good staffing levels?
Yeah, uh, Ian McKinnon has deferred, uh, to attend the part-time academy, uh, until February. Uh, he got recently hired with Canton Thorpe Fire Department full-time and has some obligations there for his advanced EMT and his CDL. So, uh, he has to defer to February.
Okay. I think he works-
His full-time job comes, comes first.
Well, and he works for us part-time, and all that training's gonna benefit us
It will.
in the long run.
All right. Anything else, nothing out of the ordinary?
Uh, we took delivery of the truck last week, last Monday.
Yep.
Um, and it was delivered that same day to, uh, our outfitter in Massachusetts. Uh, they're currently working on it, um, I haven't gotten an update, but I'm hoping, uh, that truck will be ready, uh, either by the end of the week or early next week. Same thing with the cruiser, cruiser gonna push back a week, it was supposed to be done this week, uh, they're gonna start working on it next week.
So it's at the Outfitter?
Yes.
Cool.
Uh, coffee with a cup, August fifth, uh, Friday, uh, under the tent, uh, middle of town square.
Good.
Uh, the mountain asked us to participate in a lift evac training on August fourth. We've done that in the past, not too often, uh, till we get an opportunity to do that, but, uh, uh, we'll participate in whatever capacity.
Doing it snows or doing it up on the hills?
Up on snows.
Yeah.
It was fun last time we did it.
All right, so anything for, uh, Dave, Margaret?
No.
All right.
There is one, I mentioned, uh, the mountain came down for a fireworks permit on August, uh, twenty-seventh. They're doing a private, uh, group requested fireworks, so they, uh, arranged it through the conference center and through the resort, uh, for fireworks on Saturday, August-
Where are they being launched from?
Uh, DeBarge. So just in case, I don't think it's on, because it's a private
Right.
event.
B-class Cs.
But, yeah.
Yeah.
It will be.
Okay, and got great comments on the fireworks this year. People said it's the best fireworks they've seen ever here.
Yeah, yeah, those are very good.
Excellent, well, thank you, Dave, anything for us? Any questions?
No, I don't think so.
All right, great, calendar review.
Next meeting is Wednesday, August tenth, and the planning board meeting is currently scheduled for August eleventh.
I don't think I have a problem with that. I know I have a problem with one later in the month.
All right, thank you, Brooke.
Thanks, Brooke.
Oh, in September, thank you, Brooke. Now, my scheduling isn't September, it's an issue.
Okay, um, I, I do, um, the Green Peak, um, sign thing that we're tabling for today. Um, we, because the planning board meeting is the day after the selectmen's meeting, we probably won't have any information
Right.
from that, okay, so I just wanted to point that out.
No, no, I figured, I was gonna kick, suggest kicking back to the planning board anyways, because it's-
They gotta decide on the, on the phased subdivision first.
Yeah, well, because we can't make it, well, those two can't make it, I said, I'm, I'm out of it.
Right.
All right.
Okay.
So let's get to new business, review and sign Department of Revenue Administration, the PA sixteen form.
PA sixteen is an annual form that you sign. Um, the calculation for the forty-one thousand acres of land in town is about a thirty million dollar amount. About seven hundred acre is what we have valued at.
All right, we'll move to the Department of Environmental Services, emerging contaminants of concern. It means they're gonna start testing for something new?
They, they are, I don't know if you've seen the PFOA, PFOS issues that they've had in, in the southern part of the state.
Oh, that's what this is gonna-
The contamination from the plastics manufacturer, basically. Um, we actually had similar contamination in Farmington when I was town administrator there. Um, they, they have put out this memo that I put in your packet, it's for a voluntary round of testing. And they gave us companies that will do the testing. Um, I talked to Robbie about it. Um, it'll be between eleven hundred and fifteen hundred dollars to test our wells. It is voluntary, we have not budgeted the money, uh, for these tests, so it's up to you if you want it.
Do we test for any of these things now?
No, there's no reason for us to, there's no, there's no industry.
There's no industry.
Right.
We're in the middle of the national forest, there's no real logical reason for us to do that.
If they make it mandatory, of course, we'll test for it, but-
So you think we don't need to do it?
I don't think we need to.
Okay, then-
There's really no-
No, I, I can see the parameters that exist, and we don't fall within any of them, so let's not do it.
Okay, very good.
Okay, do we get a motion of that or not?
Uh, no.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to the signed permit, permit and RV use for Sportoma ski sale in October.
Okay, so Sportoma has requested, as they do every year, for their Columbus State weekend sales, that they be able to put up the signs. It's the red one, it's the road signs in there.
Yep, it's the same signs.
Same signs they always do.
This year they wanna put someone in a trailer to supervise.
That's correct.
Did we ever have an issue with them being broken into or losing merchandise?
I think he's been sleeping in the tent.
Yeah, they, they've always had a security person and maybe more than ten years ago, kids had messed around with the tent or been
Yeah.
been there at night, which kinda prompted them to put a security person. This is the first time that they've asked to have a camper there.
Does this set any kind of precedent we might feel bad about going forward?
Um, I think on a case-by-case basis, you can, you can make this, I mean, it's, you review. It, it doesn't set a precedent where somebody could come in and just set up a trailer and start a tent.
Yeah, no, that's, I wanna be-
Um, you're, you're gonna actually vote to, to do it or not do it, so.
Okay, so on each-
We're, we're gonna make sure that it's behind the tent, between the tent and the arena, and make sure that we have the minimal visibility possible.
Now, are these two separate permits? Is it one for a, one for a tent and one for an RV?
There is, there is, well, there's one for
The sign and one for the tent.
The tent and one for the set.
But is there a required RV permit?
No, there's, there, we don't have anything like that.
Okay, so this is an ancillary use of a tent?
It is.
The ordinance allows you to, uh, uh, make, uh,
Acceptance.
Make exceptions or, or
Temporary.
Temporary permissions for, onto the RV.
Well, Bill in his text said he didn't have a problem with it, I don't have a problem with it, Margaret. All right, so do we need a motion of that?
Yeah, I, I think you should.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the signed permit and RV use for Sportoma in October, is there a second?
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, then it's unanimous.
So if you could sign this one and Chris handles the tent permit, so it's just the sign. I'm gonna give this to you, Dave.
And he handles the sanitary concerns and things?
Yeah, we, we will make a contingent on sanitary.
Right. Okay, so that takes care of that, old business we've covered. Uh, the correspondence, the thank you note from Gail, which was very nice. Uh, any other correspondence besides that?
Nope, that's all I have at this time.
All right, privilege of the floor number two. Well, we've got the same responses we had from privilege of the floor number one. So I guess that, that, anything new, board concerns or directives?
Um, I, I will just one, mention one thing. Um, I had a citizen tell me that the Cascade Path, and I'm not quite sure what part of it, um, because of the heavy rain we have, it's kinda getting washed out, and I had suggested to her that maybe WVAIA could do some things to shore it up. Um, and I sent Dan Newton a picture of the area that she was talking about, and I, you know, I haven't heard back from him. But you may wanna talk to him and see, I, you know, I don't know whether it's a question of Phil. He has two guys out here working on the Mad River staircase right now
Right.
who are doing a right job.
Good.
You know, they're just extending that wooden log.
With him or?
Um, it's through WVAIA.
Okay.
And what I had suggested to him is when they're finished there, why don't you send them up to the other place? But I don't know if they have the money or whether there's some fill or material.
If that's a few hundred dollars, do you, can we release some contingency and get it done?
Yes.
Yeah.
Can you, I'll, we'll-
I can show you the picture, but I-
But you need to put a billboard up, brought to you by this, the Board of Selectment and Town Officials, for, you know, kinda like it was a library. This rock provided by.
Right, exactly. No, well, if you just, uh, if you email me that
Yeah, I will do that.
I'll, I'll email Dan and, or call him, and we'll, we'll try to make that happen.
Yeah, I should have included you on the note, and I forgot, but I will do that now.
Oh, I have another one for Public Works. That hedgehog is back, or woodchuck, and he's gone in a different way to the corner of the stone tower, so he's-
He must have vacated a, a, a-
He vacated up here.
Vacated the, uh, the new area.
So depose, depose- Well, I think there might be more than one woodchuck in the state. But, uh-
Yeah, well, he had two at his house.
What he's done is he's gone in right next to the post, it's on the corner that divides my house to my neighbor. So he's right on the edge of that post, so I, you might wanna check it before the post collapses.
Yeah, we'll call Paul.
Want me to holler, holler out before shots are fired, or would you like us to do it quietly?
Fine, get a silencer.
Yeah, we survived the bear attack the other night, so we're fine.
That's good.
We'll keep an eye out and pull the sisters necessary.
I tried woodchuck repellent. I did, they sell this stuff at, uh, Tractor Supply.
Yep.
When you're looking at me going, oh, look at the Yoko pot, the woodchuck repellent. Maybe I can send them out.
They get them every time, oh, yeah.
Maybe I can send them out to bring in the shoreline tonight.
Tom's telling you, they make an amazing twenty-two with the silencer built right in. All right, Dave?
All right, so is that it for boards, concerns and directives? Margaret?
Yeah.
Okay, great, so I think it is five minutes after four, and thank you folks for coming, but we're gonna go into non-public for now.
Can I have both of you stay, please?
I'll just go.[1795.18]